Or ten fifteen, we're going to come back into session. And we have a timed item. Trace is here, Charlie Quaid may be joining us, and Wonzar?
Wonzar.
I was close that time.
You were.
Trace is the director of the mental health. We have a contract with Wellness Center. Oh man, I've watched out on almost two.
Actually, you have a contract with the Lake Health District.
Lake Health District. And they operate the Wellness Center for mental health. And we're still the mental health authority. So this is an update from them to us. Come on up, Trace, and if Charlie comes in my way, welcome him up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I went back and looked at our numbers from when the Lake District Hospital took over our program. And we started out with seven staff, and they were serving one hundred and ninety-nine people. Right now, we have eighteen staff, and we are serving three hundred and forty-six people. We have, excuse me, we have just hired a support specialist for the first time in our county. And we are expecting a therapist from Texas any time. And we may be potentially hiring another therapist for children's program in June.
Can we know the support specialist's function?
The support specialist is individuals who have been in services. And they go through training, and they receive a certificate of, for their ability to serve the folks. And so they work very closely with people who are in services to make sure that they are kind of on the ground level of helping them learn how to function. For instance, they could take them to the doctor, advocate for them if the person is really nervous around the doctor, or if they have anxiety in the community, then they can help them by taking them grocery shopping or doing things in the community to kind of help them learn how to function in the community with their mental illness. And it's a person who's been through those services, so it's a kind of been there, done that, this is how you do it. And I think that she's going to be spectacular with that.
Well, I'm really excited about that position because of all the way back to whenever Kimberly was here. There was such a need. And you don't need therapists and others to invoke that work. They need to be put where their expertise is.
Absolutely.
But a lot of these people need that little extra hand to get through wherever they need to go, get the services they need to continue on and get better on in life. So I'm very supportive of a support specialist. That's really great news.
Yes.
It's going to take some of the pressure off of all the other, the therapists and clinicians and everything that sort double and over.
And that question would be, is one person adequate?
No, it's not. But it's a start. So, I mean, we plan on hiring a support specialist for each one of the divisions. For instance, we have one now for mental health. We plan on getting one for S U D Services, which is.
Substance use disorder.
Substance use disorder, thank you. And one for the children's division.
Also somebody up the north, like we can find.
Yes.
Excellent.
Everywhere we look, we look to have that service.
And so I also wanted to update you on the different divisions. The children's division, we're offering parenting classes right now, and that hasn't been done in two years. And it seems to be fairly successful at this point. We're working with Hardy County on what's called an ESA program. It's Early Alliance and Supportive. Early Assessment and Support Alliance. He could have brought his notes. And what that basically is, is for children who are between ten and twenty-four years old, we try to support them during their first psychotic break. For instance, if they're having auditory or visual hallucinations, if they're having delusions, and those types of symptoms, we identify them. And we actually had our first referral last week for that program. And we're working with Hardy County to get this child his needs back. We're also working on collaboration with the juvenile department. They have started coming over and meeting with our children's team on different children that are shared by the two agencies. And we're working on therapeutic foster care because we have found such a need for that. And concerning S U D, this substance use disorder, we are collaborating and supportive of Lakeview Center for Change. They have been through a turbulent time, I sent me, and we have reached out to them and offered them support and whatever we can do to help them to continue that collaboration of care. So, and I meet with Diane, who's working there on Friday, to continue that conversation.
Can you expand a little bit because the original person at Lakeview Center for Change is retiring or have retired and lives on? So what's the structure there now?
The structure is there's one therapist and an intern at this point. Up until just recently, there were some issues because the person who took it over had passed. And there was some problems with.
Deceased?
Yes, deceased, yes. And so there was some issues with trying to get the billing situated and so forth. But Diane Brock is the one who's in charge of that, and she's moving forward, and we are supportive of that.
If I could just elaborate a little bit on that. So, but it serves used a lot to the community. How do we find help, ways to help the owner who has left? We're trying to figure out solutions so that the clients that are getting care continue to get care. Because there are no therapists. So, we're very aware of that.
Charlie, we've been doing all of, not only collaborating with him in the past, but during this trying, very sad time, trying to help out.
The hand may be outstretched, may not be always received.
Yeah.
We've tried to, the county, that's how, alternate over the years, tried to interact. But I'm glad that you made further progress on that.
Thank you.
For community health, and way back to whenever Center for Change, they complement each other. Because of the need in a rural community of people that need the services, sometimes they know people in one entity or the others. So the complementary part of having both Center for Change and Wellness Center is very good for our community's health. So thank you for reaching out and helping keep that going. Because there's a contingent of people out there that will go to one instead of the other just based on walking through the door, who they'll run face to face with, so.
Without a doubt, there has always been issues that keep people from going to get care. Whether it's the stigma of getting care, the stigma of the location, the stigma of, or somebody told me one thing and I don't want to listen to those people again, I'm willing to hear it from somebody else. Maybe the same message doesn't really matter. But you're right, having alternatives for our communities to be able to access that service is vital. How we make that happen isn't always easy to do. We are trying to figure out some collaboration that might facilitate both facilities staying open. But it's relatively fraught, so we're trying to address that.
And along with that philosophy is, excuse me, is we have one of our S U D clinicians going and working with the primary care providers on warm handoffs to those who are identified with opioid struggles. And we have found that that pilot's working pretty well.
So what that means is an S U D therapist is physically in one of the clinics, physically there. So if the doctor says, let me have you talk to this person right now, that's what a warm handoff is. Rather than just saying, the doctor says, I'm sorry, you're having some challenges, we've talked about it, you need to see a therapist. The number of people that actually go to the therapist is traumatic. Because people say, yeah, I'm not going to, or I haven't got time, or I don't want to listen to those people. Physically present. That transfer happens much quicker. And that first visit, we say, well, maybe I will.
Integration of the mental health and physical health have been a long desire endeavor. And I appreciate you guys making it even more fluid.
In the new clinic remodeling they were doing at the hospital, the clinics for the hospital, we have four rooms set on four mental health services. So that we will, not only as we started, we will enhance that and make it more and more available. It's good for the clients, good for the community. We make a difference.
It's great, Charlie.
Community partnership between the doctors, the medical piece and the mental health piece.
Yep.
And hopefully it'll take some of the stigma.
Yes.
Okay. Doesn't make right, but stigmas are still what they are.
And the doctors here raised this last time.
Oh, yes. Because I mean, the patient does.
Well, everybody have choices.
Absolutely. Another thing that the S U D team is doing is when we identify that there is one of our individuals in the jail, they're starting to go up there and do treatment with them in the jail while they're awaiting whatever is going to happen. And that's been really well received. The clients are feeling supported, and they know when they get out, they've already started those services. So they're more than willing to start those treatment needs at our facility.
Keep in mind, you know, as part of that, an anomaly of how the Oregon Health Authority pays for mental health services. Ceases to pay for those services, the person becomes incarcerated. So then, when we send one of our therapists there, we are not able to receive reimbursement for that service. You're aware of that.
Yes, I am, Charlie. Whenever we, on our tour, that was part of some of our discussion. Now then, is it, or is there a period of time there that you can charge for some of the services? That twenty-one day, that is in my mind, I thought there was something on the twenty-one days.
There are some things that we can work on. But from the district standpoint, when I met with you before, so this is, we're interested in trying to make this work. We're going to figure out how to find financing to do this, even if the state doesn't help us. Because this is an important service. We don't want to have those people that are in crisis and become incarcerated not to have that service, but bad for communities, bad for clients on an ongoing basis. Because they, sometimes they're incarcerated, sometimes they're not.
So, Charlie, can I ask a quick question? It would make sense to me, because not everybody's incarcerated for a long time, that that initial contact might lead to once they're out, being able to receive help because they've made a connection with the clinician.
As Trace mentioned.
And as Trace said, you know, the initial contact's one thing, but sometimes people may be incarcerated for a little bit longer than they anticipate. In the bigger communities, there are mental health practitioners based in, or in jail because of that ongoing need. And it's, you may say, well, you're only going to be here for a couple of days. And that couple of days lingers on and lingers on. Next thing you know, it's been two months. And that's really difficult for the therapists to have continuity in their care of the patient. It's hard on the staff. So having, we're not able to do it as much as we want yet, we just haven't got enough people.
Well, I have them. But I've worked on, and everything, I believe it's not, it is a problem, but at the same time, it's an opportunity. Our jail, and being able to get up there and get the services there. As your team's working on this, I think that there's the collaboration and all that things, all the buzzwords were a player in that. Whenever our employees are dealing with these people, sometimes if we have a plan and we make sure mental health gets there, that can make a difference for the whole operation, for the whole jail for weeks at a time, not only the twenty-four hours. Plus, professionals in the field on medications, that may make them a little bit better behaved up there. So I'm open to a lot of different ideas, and being that partner, it's good for our employees' mental health too. Whenever they're dealing with a few blood there, a lot of them are coming down from their drugs, their alcohol.
Absolutely.
And they have some mental health issues alongside of it. So I look at it as an opportunity. It is a problem, but if we get early engagement up there, on some cases, it can make a difference to save money at countywide, from hospitals, schools, jail, right on down to being arrested again, just revolving doors. So I'm just so encouraged to hear this part, that Mr. Place and the stepping up program is and all that. We make little baby steps, but I'm willing to, speaking for one commissioner, to hear what a proposal is, make sure we get those services out there and be in a player there.
One of the key things we have to have is space. Space is a constant issue for us.
Yes.
And so when we say, yeah, we want to have somebody there, where are they going to sit? In a safe, confidential, protective environment, that is space. The next part is where are we going to have, if we hire people, where are we going to put them? So these are logistical issues that we're actively working to solve. But they are absolute issues. If we want to keep moving, we've got to keep finding places where these people can be. Therapists be able to provide that service, therapists be able to provide more service. And then of course get paid.
That's where we need to step up, as Commissioner Lerner said, it's been with our staff up there also. So we need to prioritize our own county emphasis to get something up there for you.
Appreciate that.
Another outreach that our S U D team is doing is they're being called to the hospital when someone has been seen to be on drugs or alcohol, to do an assessment there as well. So we're catching them as it's happening in their detox up at the hospital and getting them the services.
You mentioned opioids earlier. How rapid is that in Lake County?
I've heard different numbers.
Well, there's a lot of answers to that. The opioid crisis in the country is based on, well, number one, the raw numbers of people taking opioids. Number two, the amount that those people are taking. So we have, the state of Oregon has a system that will track every prescription that is filled specifically for scheduled medication. So we can track how many any individual has been one prescribed and then how many have been filled. So that's privileged information, so it's not readily available to everyone. Right now, we're actively working to reduce the number of people that take a large amount. Enlarge is a relative number. There are some from a medical standpoint, but at what point does it become a higher risk to someone? But if someone has had back pain for twenty years, and has been taking pain medicines for that twenty-year time period, getting them to change that is difficult to do. So that, I think what you're talking about is the opioid abuse issue. There are appropriate uses, and people may have pain, and we have addresses. So we're looking at the, from the medical standpoint, those that are at high risk, that take significant amounts, helping to reduce that, and finding alternatives to that volume of medication. And then reducing some of the people that are just dealing with it on a short-term basis because of a recent injury or something to that. So it's a combination of multiple issues. Many people are alerted to the death rate of opioid overdose. That hasn't been a large issue in Lake County. We haven't had, there have been some people that have expired in Lake County in the last, by ten years, that opioid use has been a contributing factor, but has not been the principal factor. So you have, I mean, there's a variety of different things according to that. So it's not an easy thing to say, oh yeah, we got a huge issue, we don't have a huge issue. The country has a huge issue. We are trying to help members of our community deal with that. And part of that is also to find alternatives to medication for pain management. We also want to do that in a very thoughtful process because people that believe that pain medicine is really helpful to them and that they become addicted to that, if they start losing that, they find ways to supplement it on their own. So they self-medicate. Unfortunately, one of the self-medications that is readily available, not yet in Lake County, but in areas around us, are those chemicals that we don't want in our community, mainly heroin or other things. So we're very mindful, working with police, mental health practitioners, to be very, very careful. And with our pharmacy. So we're all working together.
And your comment earlier about the state has a program to monitor opioids, whatever, that helps alleviate one person getting one doctor prescription, and then having to go to another facility and give it also. So it's tracked.
There's a program in the state called E D, Emergency Department of Information Exchange. All hospitals in the state of Oregon have it, Washington, Idaho. It is not prevalent in California. And what that does is any person that presents to an emergency room and gets a prescription for pain, no matter whether they're in Portland or they come here, you can see what their prescriptions have been. Those are really helpful for those people that are drug seekers and traveling and trying out different places, using the same excuses. That kind of abuse, the state is working actively to try and curtail. And the practitioners are working very hard to participate in that.
So as part of our solution to alleviate those, that dependence on opioids, not only are we providing treatment, but our prevention program has started yoga for folks. We also had a recent volunteer come to me, and we're working on starting a program for Tai Chi and meditation as part of that wrapping around services of these people who need those alternatives to look to instead of opioids. Also, our prevention program is doing a readiness survey for problem gambling all over the county. And so we're gearing up for that. And we're looking at what the needs actually are to where we can get that service up and running as well.
So on the problem gambling, our public health also gets, I think it's some gambling dollars also, no?
Just comes to. So we have specific purposes, specific needs.
Specific purposes when that money comes down.
And one of the challenges that we have, not having a casino in Lake County. Problem gambling also occurs with buying lottery tickets. It also occurs with internet gambling. It can happen, then we have someone that's the Lake County resident who travels to a casino to gamble. But those lottery dollars that are designated for that kind of service for Lake County, some of the, a lot of what we're doing is trying to provide educational services. It's hard to identify.
Absolutely.
It's easier when you have a physical location and you sell them, and track them.
Yeah, with the video lottery at a couple of lounges and establishments here, I recreationally gamble. Some of the people I've seen trying to make money at that, which is totally recreational. Some of them I've seen may have some dependencies also on other things.
Absolutely, and education is key because those that gamble online on their phone may not realize that that's an issue until their rent's gone. So, yeah, it's getting that information out there.
Education.
Big part is trying to find people that are closet gamblers that may not realize, as you said, the risks that they're facing. And they're the ones that, it's not always the ones that are just pulling the handle.
And real, yeah. And last but not least is our mental health services. And we're working on continuously increasing those services and doing outreach. We're building collaboration partnerships with some of the community members. We meet with DHS once a month, and we are meeting weekly with corrections as we move forward. We will continue to do that. We have, as a group of community partners, we have talked about supported housing. And that's a program that we're going to move forward on as soon as we start the strategic planning of that. Also, I am considering starting a supported employment program for our folks. What I've found is that as a nation, eighty percent of mentally ill people want to work, but only two percent get jobs. And that was a profound number to me. And I think that, you know, when people feel like they're functioning and they feel like they have purpose and they're contributing members to our community, that they're less likely to perpetuate those mental health symptoms.
So Trace, as we talked about before we started the meeting, I know you're going to work closely with our work source offices now. We had the ribbon cutting last week. And we're going to, I think, have a work source office that's not conventional. By any means, it's going to be there to meet all the needs in our community and all the areas of our community. So I'm really hopeful. I know Jake's really engaged with Community Justice, you know, his program. And I'm really looking forward to that because I think you'll get a lot of use from that program.
Yes, and I will outreach and talk to that agency about collaboration.
Yeah, and there's, you know, because there's the educational component to people that need job skill, skill up, just general job skills. So it's going to be a great partnership.
Awesome.
Plymouth Lake Community Action Service class does tremendous amount of that type of work over there, trying to get him to be more engaged over here, but they'd be dovetailing right on the very same subject. They have given people housing, self-esteem, that's a key right there.
Absolutely.
Are you interacting with the crisis center?
We're in the process. I've met with Gloria on, in more of an informal level, but I do plan on doing outreach with her as well.
And in the beginning.
She does come to the.
Advice report.
Advice reporting. More and more, that's.
She's here. She's here, and if the person really have new beginning of the Northlake, that's very similar work.
If I could just jump in with Trace kind of commenting, or finishing her comments. I had sent you a note saying a couple of weeks ago that Trace had indicated she might want to leave the community, and I'm happy to say that we have resolved those issues and have a firm commitment for a long time here. So issue has been resolved, so I think you should be pleased about that.
We are.
And we are moving forward, as Trace said, with a lot of different, different, on many fronts, some aggressive planning. We will want to include you as much as we can on that as, unless you want to pay for it. I'm happy to listen to how you want to spend money with us.
It's all part of the session.
I think part.
It's all part of the session.
So, and thank you for that, Charlie. I was aware of that. Trace and I worked very well together, focused last year and everything. Maybe it's on your update, but Trace is also a voting member of GOBE now and accepted onto the GOBE board, correct? Did you hear that?
There's two answers to that.
Okay.
She's been invited to the board meetings. She has not been, we as an entity, so original, when GOBE was formed, it was to represent all of the CMHBs in Eastern Oregon. And each CMHB, a vote, board member seat and a vote. The county held that seat. When we took over from the county, GOBE changed their mind and said, no, we're not going to do that. So recently, Trace was able to attend the first board meeting, first time she's been able to attend a meeting. Kevin Candle has told me that he thinks in the next month or two, the board will decide to extend a participation and seat at the vote with attendance. We have no say. That's a good step forward.
I misspoke and I thought it already happened, so.
I have not seen anything that says.
We're getting there.
Has changed.
We're getting there.
That's a good sign. In my discussions with GOBE, they're pleased that we are no longer on the worry list. GOBE has had concerns for different areas at different times. Some of the worry is, are we delivering enough service? That's usually been the issue. And Lake County has been on the worry list for a couple of years that we were not delivering enough service. We are now at a point where they are comfortable with the amount of service, not quite completely, but we're getting very close where the amount of service we're delivering is getting to within the bounds of the other mental health services that are delivered throughout Eastern Oregon. We are really important things. From our standpoint, volume is important, that means access. So the more that you enhance access and make it easier for people to get care, now we need to make sure we're getting, providing care. One of the things that's happening that we have, we're still trying to deal with is, we have people, once again, therapists, once again, that have big volumes of, big clients they've got to take care of. So with the expanded access, now we've got to ensure that we've got staff to provide that service, or we could slide back. If we're not in the view of the clients delivering the appropriate amount of care when they want, we could slide back. We're not caring. And we, Trace and our group are doing a great job of trying to make sure that doesn't happen, but it is still an issue. We have to get more practitioners, and that means we have to have more space to do it. And we have the infrastructure that goes along with it. So we're very mindful of that.
Well, Charlie, where we were a couple of years ago, I, I just sat here today and tell you, thank you, Trace, thank you. Commissioner Winters picked up pieces from the county side at that time and worked with you, worked with Kimberly to start with, and we knew it was going to be a long climb. But you all are very professional and you're very caring, and it's getting us to where we need to get, and we can't thank you enough and can't thank Commissioner Winters, because that was not easy, because it was a true train wreck. And we're, we've got the train back on track and moving forward. And it's very much appreciated.
It was a case of, in the recent past, we were promoting leadership from clinician into management, and that wasn't working. Great clinicians, or great clinicians, but not always great managers. So we appreciate your expertise in that.
Thank you.
I think the, a part that keep in mind, all small services, it is almost balance and difficult to do because Trace still has clients that she takes care of. So balancing that administrative with the providing care. I think what the district is able to do is provide some of that administrative support that really helps take a lot of that off, so she can focus her time on administrative time on things that aren't as difficult, the payroll issues, or the compliance issues, or the other issues that are very important, and that helps her more focus on the areas that where she needs to. So that's the advantage of having a bigger system. And I know that, I'm glad that you are appreciating what we're doing, but we have a lot of people, not just the therapists, that are supporting the therapy.
Exactly, but that's the whole thing. That's why this, the notion of coordinated care and falling under that umbrella of your operational procedures makes it work. And we know you've got room, I mean, you've got more area you want to cover to get to where you want to get, but we're getting there. And we work, and it's all about the people and you're getting the services. As I said, through you specifically, I can't thank you enough personally, just as a citizen for what you're doing, what you've done.
I might have to, Admiral, without it, where we're at today in a short time from where we were is unbelievable. We're not there, you're not there, our community's not there, but just hearing you talk of the needs that we have that you have already acknowledged and the needs that you're going to be working on in the future, from the housing to more employees, to having the right space, working with all the community partners. Where we're at, where we're at today is monumental, and where we're going to be in five years from now is going to be a whole nother place because of, as we put faith with where we're at today, I can see that vision starting to come together. I can see, before you came here during break, I told Commissioner Shown after his retirement, you won't have to come back and check because of it's going to be in the, in the community. They're going to see the change in our community, and it all plays together from our jail to our schools to our hospital and everything. That's my excitement, guys, of having you sit here today and get these updates. As commissioners, we're, our fingers in so many things and never get to follow everything through our bill and put all of our energy right on one thing. But whenever we surround ourselves with the right contractor, with the right people, that is success for our communities. And, and that's what I'm seeing, that's we're setting our community up for success. It's not about commissioners, it's about our community, our people. And so I'm very excited. There's going to be some valleys and mountains that we're going to go over, and there's going to be some people that's unhappy, there's going to be some people ecstatic. But in five years, we'll look back, that's my prediction, and we're going to be, our community's going to be a lot healthier.
And that's thanks to your leadership.
That's what I, that's my encouragement. It's going to be without some challenges, as we all very well know, we can talk about it. There's challenges fixed, that's behind the scenes that are a challenge, work through and we get there, but I, I really look for our community, there's going to continue to be the need, and that, that need's going to grow just because of society and with the drugs and the abuse and the other things that, like, mental health and with our addiction program. But we're going to make a difference instead of just continuing to climb. We pull through those people out of the system, it's going to make a big difference. So thank you.
One last thing before we move on, as I mentioned, many other things. We are meeting later this week with representatives from Northlake Health District. I don't know if Trace talked to you anything about that. As you know, we are appreciative of using the space that you are affording us in Northlake for mental health services, and we're sharing accountability. It is less than optimal because it is the one lack of space. Number two, it's a location that doesn't encourage the free kind of flow and privacy that people need when they're seeking care. We have met with Northlake in the past, and being again with them, they have some available space. It's important that you understand, as a health district, anytime we enter into another health district, we have to do that with their permission. And so we did get Northlake Health District permission for Lake Health District to operate in their environment. And we're looking now to possibly either share existing space or talk about expansion of their space, if they've identified additional needs. And so we've been looking at a location purchase, building, something like that. Haven't found anything. Christmas Valley doesn't exactly have the optimum buildings that we've seen considered buying or building. If we can work with Northlake, that might look better. Have any clear answers?
Good board of directors on that district.
Absolutely, and so I believe they're coming down, several members of their board of directors are coming here to talk to us, look at what we're doing, talk a little bit more from a strategic standpoint about how we can look better together.
That's very. What day would that be to you?
Thursday.
Afternoon?
Midday, I believe it's like eleven to one, something to that effect.
Making that possible.
I'm not clearing exactly the locations. I know they want to see the, well, the center, but they also want to look at what's happening at the district. It might be the unique, I just don't have an answer yet.
So as you're working through, that's one of your options is there? You mentioned.
Not options, we're, we're just talking, oh, county, we're busy working on that.
Talked about the site.
Oh, second.
The site, your, one of your options is to be with the health clinic and maybe even expand or whatever, you look for other properties up there and so on. If one of your options is to build your own facility, always look through our planning office of what lands the county has proposed on, that the land can be relatively probably free from the board of commissioners if the location is right. Fill it in your bag of options. If you're going to look at bare land and build from the basement up or say, don't forget about the property might be, if the location is correct, relatively cheap to zero.
Excellent, excellent concept. As I've looked at properties, one of the things that I look for is number one, how close can we be to the Northlake County Center? Number one, because of proximity helps give people opportunities. Number two, distance from the highway, allowing it to set back too far. If you put it too far away, sometimes people that are receiving services become agitated. It puts people at risk. You want to put anybody at risk, that isn't a good thing to do, either client or therapist. So we look for, there's a variety of different things we need to, in terms of what becomes a viable alternative. So sometimes we want it close, we want to have reasonable access to power and water, putting a safety, all that kind of stuff. So if the county had properties that met those criteria.
You may be surprised with Pen Phillips Development up there and so many smaller tracts of land of what the county gets in foreclosure and locations.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I usually call it really close. I had to start here locally as one that the county was involved with on foreclosure that one. I can't think of one off the top of my head, but.
I'll talk to Darwin.
Contact with Darwin, and if that, it's just one of your options, as you mentioned.
A great option.
Well, and it's going to be interesting for me Thursday, because I had lunch with one of the board members here about a month ago, and he was talking about this very subject.
We've been talking off and on for some time.
But he, I mean, he sounded very receptive to what all you're working on, trying to do. So be interesting to know how he feels.
I'll let you know.
Okay.
Anything else that you'd like from us?
Well, as always, stay on advisory, been falling down a little bit on advisory. I apologize, a couple of mine can get to, but we need to get that back to hand. Thank you for the presence in Northlake. I know that's important, and we were never able to get, never did get to a lot of presences there. I know you want to get more, but.
Oh, what our presence is, we didn't tell you that.
I know, I'm telling you, thank you for your presence in Northlake. Couple other things, I wanted to compliment also reaching out to all the partners, and I heard a little bit you're reaching out to the school, you're reaching out to our juvenile department, and I know in the jail we foster some of that. One thing I didn't hear very much about, that'd be very good, is budget-wise. How are you doing budget-wise, on the budget and the dollars coming in? You've added capacity of people or seeing more clients? Is the budget sound or will you be doing good? Do you hear anything that way coming down from the state? The added programs, is it going to be mandatory or funding is going to be cut? What are you hearing budget-wise?
Budget-wise, I can tell you from the district standpoint, as it gets rolled into the whole budget for the district, the budget is two things. Number one, we're working on next year's budget. Okay, so when we talk about budgeting, we're busy thinking about what's going to happen in 2018, 19 budgeting. And we are putting in our plan for the district, adding the therapists that we're talking about. So we are planning going for current year, we are able to pick up some of the costs that have not been, not necessarily covered full cost, we're finding it in different ways. What makes, while we report most of that, when it comes to some of the infrastructure, RIT, the, this RIT costs, we have certain time, equipment costs for mental health, but then we have all the practitioner, or all the technicians that are busy working on the software supporting, we don't see those costs in that question. So we're still able to have a sound financial statement for the mental health services in the county. Okay? We are also, there are some ways that we can build a state for services that we deliver that GOBE does not accommodate any of the services we deliver. So we work with our auditors to make sure that we're maximizing the reimbursement for services that we deliver, and the state is responsible for that. Okay?
So probably where I'm going with that, Charlie, Trace is, is when the state audit comes down and they want to talk to me, and us being the mental health authority, and off the top of my head, I can't remember what all our duties are, or am I going to remember them all, but I think there is a budget component in there that the mental health authority has to be aware of and all that. And so I want to, if you can give us an update on that, maybe on paper, so that whenever, whenever they interview me, because I'm on the interview part of when the state comes down, I want to be able to support and show that. And I'm trying to think back and probably for offline, we need to look at, make sure that our advisory group, what their duty is to advise the board of commissioners, which is the mental health authority, is getting done as much time is coming. I think there's something there that we all need to make sure that we're checking that box.
There are a couple of things that you can respond to that. Number one, we'll give you the specific budget, or not budget, the cost reports for our mental health services specifically, so you can see that. We won't have all of the total costs, because some of that's. We won't have all of the total costs, because some of that's accounted for elsewhere. Maintenance is not completely allocated to mental health services, we allocate it differently. But we can provide most of it. Number two, on our website, we have our audited financials that has the financial status for all that we're doing. It's more comprehensive, may not have all the specific details. We have to provide that. In terms of the responsibility between the LMHP and the CMHP, you as the best part is Commissioners with licensed clinical medical, or LMHP, Licensed Medical Mental Health.
Local mental health.
Local mental health. Thanks to you. And we as the contractor of the CMHP, so you as the LMHP, you appoint, as an example, number one, our executive director. Now, that is a function, is are you appointing me or are you appointing Trace? Because for all intents and purposes, I've been the executive director for the district handling the, she is the executive director for the Wellness Center. So, that way, by accepting her as the executive director of the Wellness Center, me as the executive director for the district, contract with CMHP, you're appointed, you've effectively appointed us to do that. What I don't see in anything in the language in the contract between OHA and Commissioners is that you have to physically go out and do that. I couldn't find it. In terms of...
I'm sure that doesn't have to go through the advisory committee, because advisory committee is the mental health authority, the MHA is appointed by us to bring things to us. I'm not sure of that.
The advisory board's responsibility is to advise you of issues related to the relationships of the CMHP and his, and the partners, community partners.
So, we can probably talk pretty good on this, but I think we need to shore up that, especially with the state audit coming.
Absolutely.
And they will be here.
Trace and I can tab team on that, Charlie, if you're good with that.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Let's get us where we need to be and you need to be and the advisory board needs to be, and we're going for it.
Good, yeah, good. So...
And everything came out okay?
It's still there. Hopefully, I'll, you'll see me wearing this for a while.
Taking opioids?
I take a pain.
Are you self-administering opioids?
Self-administering.
No.
That's a good answer.
Yeah. Actually, I don't take any pain meds, I haven't taken any pain meds.
Yeah, when I had mine, it was pepper base and it was high top, the pain topless.
I have a very high pain tolerance. Why do you think I'm sitting here?
Yeah. I think you entered that on a trip to John Daisy, because you drove there and back, and it was pretty windy that day.
That's why we're all here.
Thanks, Trace.
Thank you guys so much. Trace, if you're convenient, I'm gone more often, but if you're convenient, let's get together and visit, and I can come over there if that works.
Okay.
Just email me some days of work for you.
I will email you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're gonna go back to Melanie. And Jamie, you might want to argue.
This is gonna be a sec. You can go ahead.
So, we're going to skip you one more time. You're put on the back for an old time. Come up, Kevin. I'm on the day sort of deal on the semester.
Okay.
So, you have several different items. Kevin, the first one we've got is the Dog Lake Forest Service contract. A little discussion on that?
We can have a little discussion on that, although on the Forest Service end, it's not finalized. So, the discussion is that we'll...
To be continued?
Yeah, to be continued. We're working on being able to provide that service to the Forest Service on their end and how they manage their agreements, they're not quite ready to have a sign with us.
Okay. And I apologize to you and the board, I jumped, I looked right past, but it started with number two. Number one is Dog Lake Crushing Contract.
That's the one I have here.
I apologize to all, all in the room, I looked past that.
No problem. Dog Lake Lane Rehabilitation Crushing Contract, this is for the remaining material needs for the aggregate base for our grant project. It is in a total amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred forty dollars. When we put this out for bid, we put it out for bid two different ways, one for source availability and one for delivery to our yard. Last year, we had necessary, I guess, but additional costs in hauling a lot of water to interject the way we installed this material. So, we thought it'd be appropriate to see what avenues or what expenses we could save by having it delivered to our yard, and that is the way we like to proceed.
I'm sorry, Kevin, to do this to you at a meeting, but does this aggregate or the actual paving, or is this base?
This is base.
Okay.
Yeah, this is base and shoulder material. So, the shoulder, I guess, when I sit here and talk, I have to stand, so that's no problem, I can talk a little bit more about it. So, a lot of the ag base that we took off the project, we saved, well, not a lot, all of it, and we utilize it for backing the shoulders up for the base material. We're gonna do that again, but the specs call for this spec material for shoulder as well. So, there is some units in there that will be for brand new shoulders once the wiring services installed.
So, this is on for actual consideration tomorrow. You have any other questions on that for Kevin? All right, so, we already done the service contract, we have the addition of the chip seal contract, that's what I have next, too.
The chip seal oil, we put out for requests for quotes from the two vendors that are available within reason to haul to us, Albina and Idaho. I'm assuming you guys are looking at the prices there. They are a little bit more than they were last year, but so too is the asphalt index, so we kind of fall prey to how the fluctuation in asphalt index is when it comes to buying oil. Idaho, in this case, is still the best price, and they, Idaho also offers us some medium set oil, which we're gonna use in the Northlake, in Silverlake area to try and fix some rutting issues that are creating, you know, future maintenance problems, so they also provide this medium set oil for that.
And this will lock that price in?
Yeah, it says on here, I don't know how far down you read, and I have another document just so that it's clear, but it says on here it's good for five days. It's good for thirty days, but five days as long as it's being presented to a commission. Price being three hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred dollars.
Say, can you make sure?
Three hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred dollars. I say it wrong.
I'm not seeing that on your numbers here. Am I?
This one's on the left. This one's on the cover sheet. It's right over here.
Three hundred eighty...
Well, it's got three hundred fifty-four thousand six... Oh, I'm combining two, I'm sorry. It's point nine thousand seven.
Okay.
The total fiscal impact is three eighty-four four hundred.
I wasn't having the two numbers together.
Can't find it, my fault.
Next on the agenda, unless there's other questions, herbicide bids for tomorrow.
So, similar to the oil, we have two vendors that provide us quotes for herbicide, for the herbicide program, and this year, crop production services, with a total price of point nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-five cents.
All right, and that's on for action tomorrow also. Any questions on that?
Yep, that's about a thousand dollars less than the second bid.
It is, we have, the second bid was thirty thousand eight sixty-six. And actually, they were, these two companies were much more competitive this year than they were last year, the difference was pretty substantial. But it's same materials, so cost, it gets delivered to us, we're not gonna get it.
Okay. I think that's it for you for just a short time. We jump from there, go back up our agenda, unless you had other, I'm sorry, Kevin, I didn't ask if you had any other updates or anything that you wanted to mention at this time.
Updates only for Dog Lake Lane Rehab, starting, gonna start April ninth for the public, so that they know to try to avoid as much as possible the road construction. It helps us. And it will be started under, with traffic, so traffic control, and we'll start to mill on April ninth unless something happens. Nature-related that we have a patrol over.
Well said, we spoke for, for winter storms starting. Are you planning on winter being over by then?
Well, last year, last year, the first day we milled, I'll say again...
You shouldn't comment.
I'll say, last year, we milled the first two days in the snow, and if we have to do it again, we will, but we'd like not to.
There you go. All right, with that, we're gonna jump back up our agenda to natural advice, Jay to sit in, just a couple of quick updates from Melanie. Disaster Recovery Committee, and we probably, just a quick overview on that, Melanie, and we're probably, we may have a call later on with our IT people, the Commissioner, and ask more further questions at that time.
So, recently, I met with Actech Solutions to help me with my budget plan for this next year, and they recommended that we have a disaster recovery plan committee in the event of a natural disaster that might occur, such as flooding the basement or an earthquake. So, we're not able to access our facilities to conduct business as usual in the IT department. So, I would like to form a committee with your approval to start thinking about what we can do to mitigate this happening, like how can we still function if we don't have any servers or internet? And then Brad Brown will be on the phone later, and you guys can ask him any specific questions. On here, it says that there, it says communications team, finance team. I think that might, it's not really a team, it's just someone to represent the financial aspect of the county. So, we have that along the server for the backup, so we can still make payroll, we can still function, but it just probably won't be here. We'll have to, we'll need a backup place. We'll need, we'll need backup computers. And so, nothing's been, obviously, been talked about. I have spoken to the people I'd like to be on the committee, and they're all willing. So, with your approval, I'll start getting that together.
Yeah, we don't have, do we have that on tomorrow?
Yeah.
I'll make it, because disaster connotates a lot of different things.
Right.
And I meant to mention this to you before, Melanie, I'd like to see us list this group as IT disaster.
Okay.
Because some people think of all the other facets, the building and everything else.
And it's not a backup system because we have it, it's a hardware accessibility to continue functioning, maybe.
I think we'll get that clarification from our IT professionals, because I too have some questions on that, because, and I do appreciate you want this renamed, because all of it, we, we need to know what he's really telling us, why we need this, because of when we talk backup, we've been led, we have backup now.
Offsite.
Offsite and so on, so I think clarification is...
Yeah, it's pretty clear. The backup, it's all of the data is in a black box someplace, offsite. Now, if we have a disaster here with flooding or something, we can't get on a computer or something to make payroll or make this contract, things of that nature. It's different than just backup. It's dated functionality. But rather...
Yeah, I have a lot of questions, Brad, because of I dabble into the IT side and I just help confuse people. There's professionals in that field and it's not me.
I know, and that's pretty good.
So, and then, your next part?
Yeah, so, this goes along with that. I'd like to have a backup internet service. I've spoken to Actech and they recommend FireServe, because it's through an airwave technology, there isn't a cable that's susceptible to being cut or whatever happens to them. So, this internet isn't going to have the same functionality, it won't be as fast, but in the event that the cable's cut, we'll have internet still. We can get the necessities done, and...
It's ridiculous.
Yeah, and so, the fiscal impact would be thirty-two dollars a month for their minimum plan, ninety-nine dollars to install it, and then a ten dollar fee for an ISP. So, for the year, it'll cost four hundred and twenty dollars plus the hundred and ten.
And as we... Your numbers must be wrong. Thirty-five dollars a month for a year, that's...
Yeah.
Is your number correct?
That's four twenty.
Four twenty? Because we were talking different.
That was for a bigger plan. I asked Josh, is it, do we need this big plan, or can we get away with having something smaller? And he said, most definitely, we can go with a small plan. In the event that this happens, we can call them and they can bump up our speed if the ten by ten isn't working. So...
In particular, Melanie, because I was in there when you were, when we were having that discussion with Jamie and Josh, and if it's gonna be long-lasting, that's Melanie to make that call.
Yeah, so, if it's more than an hour, they can call Fire Serve and say, hey, we're not functioning at this speed, and it's just an instantaneous fix.
Let's quantify that with Brad Brown, and I'll call him later and make sure that that's the size and the amount we need and that that works that way.
Okay.
It sounds good, but just the numbers was different than what I had in my mind, so...
Trying to save the county money.
There you go, that's good.
Have Brad Brown talked with Fire Serve, Ronnie Lee?
What's that?
Have Brad Brown already chatted with Fire Serve?
No, I wanted to get your permission before proceeding to any kind of, any kind of activity.
Check for a record on the paper on the audience. Present in that is by fiber optic, which is subject to backovers and other things. This is a microwave that Fire Serve already shared part of the community here. Also, I had a phone call this morning from Day Wireless, that's another microwave company in Dan. They're gonna branch out into Lake County and their territory by presence and so on. Future background info.
Okay, so, that's got you covered, Melanie, on that item?
Okay.
All right, so, I don't have liaisons updates here, or you guys can go forward, get Andrew, we have a couple of executive session things.
We have tomorrow, Mr. Kestner might wanna give him a sense, he's...
I don't even have tomorrow's.
That's right. And we need to add, Melanie, those two other items on Kevin's, the chip seal contract, the reward of the herbicide.
Just a quick little liaison, since I won't be here tomorrow. I was gone yesterday because I needed to take my wife over to Coquill, Coquill or Coquill?
Coquill.
Because she has a new, or we have a new baby granddaughter. So, I took her over and probably before we pick her up next week. The other thing, I won't be here tomorrow because I have, AOC gave me a paper, and they sent me to the state cybersecurity advisory council, so I'll be, you'll come on, but I'll be back on Thursday.
Okay. All right, with that, we're gonna take about a five-minute break as we kick people out here, we'll come back in under executive session, one nine two six six two I. We'll come back in under executive session, 192662I, I believe, and that's for evaluations.
Hey, Melanie. There are some...